You lost it. You know that's not an old.
Hello, welcome to the City Council meeting for July 6, 2020. We have roll call, please. Here.
Marvel.
Here.
Holman.
Here.
Polowski.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wordinger. Harmon.
Thank you, Anna. We'll move to approval of the agenda. Yes.
Point number 14, the update from the city manager. I'd actually like to move that to a closed session of the city council meeting.
On what grounds?
Discussion of personnel issues.
Have the personnel notified and given option for public meeting?
No, this isn't regarding any specific.
Okay, policy.
Just policies and plans for the future.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes to the agenda or additions?
Where were we supposed to put the treasurer's report at?
That was a mistake. The, under the consent agenda where it says accounts payable, it should also include the treasurer's report.
Okay.
Which is included in your agenda packet.
Correct.
So we'll add treasurer's report under five consent agenda, A, accounts payable and treasurer's report. Any other changes or revisions to the agenda? Floor would be open for a motion to approve the agenda with the treasurer's report and number 14 as closed session.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for July 6 with the mentioned changes or additions.
I'll support.
We have a motion and support to accept the agenda. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Agenda is approved. Thank you. You know, trustee Marvel, that's a good question. I don't know that there's a policy specifically on that, but historically when we do not have council present, we have given excused or not unexcused, but we have given excused absences. Has anyone had contact from two trustees?
I thought Carol was going to be here.
Wordinger and/or Harmon.
I can give her a call. She may call at seven o'clock.
Okay.
And our policies states that a council member cannot have only so many in one year, unexcused absences.
Three unexcused, I think it is.
Right. We did not, we did not have a motion at a special meeting when Commissioner Harmon was absent. We didn't vote on that.
Correct.
And tonight, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't, we've got to approve, we've got to vote whether they're approved or not.
All right. Council's going to take a five-minute pause and we'll be back at 6:10. Thank you. We have approved the agenda. I am going to back up, Anna, to roll call. I'd like you to retake roll call and then we go back on live, please. Thank you. And then we'll go into citizen comments. Okay, we're not on yet. So guys, let me know when you're ready to go back on. Whenever. Thank you. We will reconvene the July 6, 2020 meeting of the Galesburg City Council. I am going to ask Anna to please do a roll call attendance again, please.
West.
Present.
Marvel.
Here.
Holman. Here.
Well.
Here.
Smith.
Yeah.
Wordinger.
Here.
Harmon.
Here.
Thank you. There was some discussion specific to attendance about historically doing an excused or unexcused absence from council. There is no direct policy on that other than the charter does say that if there is an unexcused absence within three, three absences within one calendar year, you could be removed from council. So I want to put that out there. I also want you to understand that we have done the dates for the remainder of 2020 and all council meetings will start promptly at 6:00 PM, as we had talked historically about that. The resolution that we passed for council dates does say 6:00 PM, so we passed that last month. So with that, we will also, council approved the agenda with the addition of treasurer's report under consent agenda. As well as a request by city manager Baraker to move 14 city manager updates to closed session specifically for personnel policy discussion, which will be the only thing that we can discuss in that session. As we move, we must stay specifically to the subject we moved into closed session for. So I will be very strict about catwalking in that session as well. So.
Question, clarification?
Yes.
It has to do with me.
Pardon me?
It has to do with me.
It's a personnel issue?
It is, yeah.
And I asked earlier, is it a personnel person issue? Is it a policy issue? Because if it's a person issue, that person has to be given an opportunity to hear it public or an opportunity to move to closed session. So if it's about an individual, that's up to the individual whether it's open or closed session.
Okay.
If it's closed session, it's fine. Closed session is fine. Very good. Okay, thank you. All right. And with that, everybody caught up? Ready to go? All right, we're going to move to citizen comment number four on the agenda. If you are a citizen and you are watching the stream now, there should be a dialogue box on your screen that you can click on. It will give our audiovisual team the opportunity to read that question to council and I'll leave the floor open for a minute to do, to solicit a public comment. Anything, guys? Anything popping up? Still good? Okay, very good. With that, we will go to number five, consent agenda, which consists of accounts, approval of accounts payable for $43,370.02, the treasurer's report and the minutes from the city council meeting dated June 16, 2020. Floor would be open to a motion for approval of consent agenda.
I move to view the consent agenda.
Is there support?
I support.
Anna, we'll need a roll call, please, Anna, given that we're approving payables.
Harmon.
Yes.
Wordinger.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Polowski.
Yes.
Holman.
Yes.
Marvel.
Yes.
West.
Yes. Consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to number six, discussion about bringing on Kalamazoo area building authority to provide building permit and inspection services for the city. Mike Allwine, hello, I'm assuming you might, is our guest this evening and he's going to give us, he can give us a little overview. You all should have the information presented to us by city manager Baraker. have the information presented to us by City Manager Beriker. I don't ever say that right. I'm so sorry.
Beriker.
Beriker. See, say it three times and I'll get it. Anyway, so this would be the time to ask all the questions that you may have, and with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Mike. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Allwine. I'm the building official for the Kalamazoo Area Building Authority, commonly known as CABA. CABA is an authority that is formed under the Urban Cooperation Act, whereas the member municipalities sign an agreement to share their building department with each other. And it was born out of the necessity of several municipalities that didn't have the construction development sufficient to support their own building department, so basically it's just a joining of forces. One of the common misconceptions is that it's a contract between the municipality and CABA, and that is not the case. The members actually own CABA. Financially, we are self-sufficient. Our revenue from our permits and inspections cover our operating costs. So basically, it would be an agreement between, and the current members are Comstock and Kalamazoo Townships, Richland Township, the City of Parchment, and Pine Grove Township in Van Buren County. So we, and we provide full building code enforcement services for all of the municipalities, which includes obviously the issuing of building permits, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing permits. We also do in several municipalities what we call property maintenance inspections, and these are inspections that are done on a, it's a complaint basis. Commonly, in other municipalities, they're commonly called rental inspections, but they also will cover vacant structures, dilapidated buildings. They all fall under the auspices of the International Property Maintenance Code. We do provide zoning administration through, we, we have a contract with an individual who, his name is Bear Priest, he's a Richland Township clerk, and he provides zoning administration services for one of our municipalities. The other municipalities have their own. So that's not something that, we did that out of necessity to assist Pine Grove Township because their previous department was, was performing those services. We don't care to, to get into and to specialize into those because over the, over the years, as community planning progresses, as the building code becomes more technical, it's more of a, each field is more specialized. So we focus on the, on the construction code, and we leave the community planning and zoning administration to the proper individuals or proper professionals. Like I said, we are self-sufficient, so all of our permit fees are generated. There are no fees that any member municipalities have to pay to CABA. There's no membership dues, no annual fees, no per permit fees or anything like that. That's all covered under the permit fees, with the exception of when we do these property maintenance inspections, we do bill the municipality for those. And how we receive those is those have to be approved by that municipality, an official in that municipality, which would be an official of your choosing, should you join. And the reason for that is so that we, because we will receive calls many times, that people are calling to complain that they've, you know, they've got rental issues with the landlord or something like that. We don't know the history. There may be a history that the local municipality knows. So that's their authorization for us to perform that inspection, which thereby then we bill the municipality. Prior to myself coming on board, I was hired in as a building official in late 2015. Prior to that, CABA was billing the property owners directly. The problem with that was they wouldn't always get paid. And not being a local unit of government, we did not have the legal authority to lean the property taxes to recover the cost. So the board decided to bill the municipalities for these, and then if they chose to recover those costs from the property owner, then they could through their treasurer department, you know, they could lean the property taxes if necessary. It's, it's worked really well. It also eliminated the, if there are no violations, if we perform an inspection and there's no violations, the municipality typically then just covers the cost because there were no issues. We've been, CABA was formed in 2012, and it originally was four municipalities, and then in early 2016, two municipalities decided to form their own authority. So in 2016, that's when CABA, we relocated from the west side of the county to the, to the east side, our current location, on Nazareth Road. We're about 200 yards south of the intersection of Gull and Nazareth. We have full-time, we have two full-time administrative staff, personnel that schedule inspections, issue trade permits, answer the telephone. We have a full-time building inspector who's in the field, and we have multiple trade inspectors that are under contract. And between all of them, we have the ability to provide inspections for all of the trades Monday through Friday every day of the week. So. I'm sure I'm missing some things, but I think I probably covered most of it, so I welcome any questions that you may have.
So the setup is quite similar to inspection service out of Athens in makeup, where it's a group of townships or cities that go together, the form of it?
Oh, yes.
I didn't want to mention names, so.
Yeah, I know, yep, I know who you're talking about. Yeah, I think they're formed under the Urban Cooperation Act also, by inter-local agreement.
Because I was on the board in Lakashma when we, when that all came to be. So I guess I'll ask you the same question I asked over many years ago. How do you treat the homeowner that pulls their own building permits? I mean, are you tough on them, or do you give them an opportunity to correct if it's a minor correction that you can re-inspect later? How, what's your philosophy on that?
My philosophy is I don't have the authority to, and neither any of our inspectors either. I don't have the authority to require people to do something that I want them to do. Our job is to interpret the state construction code as directly as possible. There are some portions of the code that are open to interpretation, and we are open to that discussion in the event that there, an issue does arise. However, most of it's pretty clear-cut, and, and we, we get those calls quite often from contractors that have never worked in a municipality that we serve. I'll get a call and they want to know what I want to see. Well, I don't have that authority to tell you what I want to see. So as long as it's in compliance with the code. We do have, particularly this year, we have had an inordinate amount of homeowners pulling permits. We've issued more deck permits this year than we probably have last year and the year before combined. I would say two-thirds of the permits that we're seeing right now are for decks. So might explain the pressure-treated lumber shortage. But we do work with them. We do have forms available on our website, tutorials that help them through the application process. We are open to questions. My personal philosophy for running the authority, I was a building official for seven municipalities in Van Buren, Cass and St. Joe County prior to coming here, and I was a private business owner prior to that. And my personal philosophy that I also have passed on to our staff and to our inspectors is we are a customer service-oriented business, and we operate as such.
Do you think that answers my question?
Thank you.
So when you were just talking about building a lot of decks, when you go to give the building permit or look at the, look at the site, do you follow the Galesburg ordinances as far as the setting?
Setbacks and-
Setbacks?
Yes. And that would be something that, in speaking with Gabe, that my understanding was the previous building department would approve the permit, the zoning aspect of the application?
That is correct.
Okay. And that's what we do with all of our municipalities. We make daily rounds to them, so we make a copy of every application and plan set that comes in, and we take it to them with a checklist. And the checklist is for their use. Now, if we are going to provide that for you, then we would do that in-house. But then that is basically our permission that once all of the construction code requirements are satisfied, that we can issue the permit.
Okay.
So Act 230 very simply states that no permits are issued until all local ordinances and regulations are met.
And what is the policy if a business owner or a homeowner sees what they feel is a violation? Do they, how do they kind, how, what do they call, City Hall, and City Hall calls you, or how does that work? If they see something that's not fitting the zoning ordinance, it's not following zoning ordinance, it's, it's, it might be an ordinance violation, but it might be under zoning, which would be different than, or-
We, we don't provide ordinance enforcement.
You don't?
That's not something that we, we will do, like I said, vacant structures, dilapidated buildings, rental complaints. We, we do those, those types of enforcement that are related to the construction code, but we don't do blight, weeds, junk cars. Yeah, we don't provide ordinance enforcement.
Or, or anyone that may be going ahead, like we say, in building or putting something on the property that is a violation to our zoning ordinance, you don't do?
If somebody's constructing something, yes. If it would, and if it would violate the zoning ordinance, as a zoning administrator, we can do it under the construction code. If, if it is a project that requires a building permit.
Well, I'm talking about like, our zoning ordinances are those tents or those, what do you call those, Rich?
Accessory structures?
Accessory structures. There are a lot of temporary ones are being put up, which is against our ordinance, or too, too close to other buildings and that kind of thing. You don't handle anything like that?
If it's related to the construction code, yes. So in other words, if it were a detached accessory structure that exceeded 200 square feet, a building permit would be required. We can issue a stop-work order. If they don't comply, we would have your ordinance enforcement officer issue an MCI. I provide the state construction code requirements and the stop-work order notice, and then once it's submitted to the district, then I will attend the informal and the formal hearing as necessary. I can't by law issue the citation the ordinance officer has to, but being that it's construction code-related, I'm there to make the case for the municipality.
And on the back here, it says planning zoning fee schedule. It has planner fee and administrative fee. Is the administrative fee for the City of Galesburg done? Or what's, I see it's separated.
Yeah, those were, those were placed in there when Pine Grove Township joined because they needed that. And those are the fees that are associated with any planning and zoning that has to be conducted through Bear Priest, who, we, we basically are just the, the medium for him to provide, we're providing a place for him to perform the zoning administrator functions, use the database that all of the municipalities share, which I'll, I'll get to that. That was one thing that I did want to touch on. So those fees are established by him based upon his fees.
So his fees would be the administrative fees, or what, is there a certain amount of fees here that he would receive?
Yes.
And is that the planner fee or the administrative fee?
Well, this is something that, I should back up. That would, this, this is something that would have to be tailored, custom tailored for the city, just like we had to do with Pine Grove, because you'll have fees associated with public noticing, escrow-
Right.
Things of that nature. Those portions of it are the city's call. Then whatever time Bear has into it, then that overall fee will be what the actual fee that the applicant will have to cover. So that would be something that what we would, what we would do if this is something that the city chose to move forward with, I would sit down with Gabe, and we would look at all of the individual processes that your planning commission would have, your zoning board appeals would have, to find out what costs are associated with the city holding these, these hearings and these reviews, and then anything that Bear has to do for his portion of it, and then we would come up with a fee schedule that would be City of Galesburg-specific. Because your fees may be different for a site plan review for a planning commission hearing than what another municipality's would be.
So this fee schedule is just a sample, more or less?
This is what, yeah, yes. Yep. Because like I said, there, it's, it's a combination of two fee schedules, the city's and then ours. So.
Well, it says in here that, under membership procedures, that CABA would provide a fee comparison if we provided a copy of our current fee schedules. Is that a fee comparison for all of the county or municipalities, or?
That was, yes, and that was something that was done in the very beginnings, and we only used it for Pine Grove Township, and this was just a generalization. Quite frankly, I've only used this for three times. I mean, this isn't, I don't give, I don't give these presentations that often. So we've had, we've had the City of Parchment, Pine Grove, and in Richland Township. And Pine Grove is the only one where we've actually applied any zoning administration or planning services for. So if there were any, in other words, that is not set in stone. Let's put it that way.
And Mike, the ordinance enforcement fee schedules are only if we work with you for an ordinance enforcement issue. If we have our own internal department, we aren't going to see any of these, correct?
Correct. And the board determined a little over a year ago, because they, we did try it, and it's too much, it's too much for us to, to conquer.
Yeah.
The, it's, it's, I was an ordinance enforcement officer for seven years in my hometownship. It's a thankless job, and it's difficult to find the proper personnel to do it, and it detracted too much from our primary objectives.
Also, your bylaws state that if, if the city approves moving with CABA, that one of the board members would become a member of CABA?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. We have monthly board meetings. They're on the second Thursday of the month at 2:00 PM. There was discussion at the last board meeting of potentially changing the time and possibly the day, but again, that is something that is subject to the board's discretion. We hold the board meetings at our office. We do have a, a board room, but it's the, it's the coordination of all of the elected officials' schedules.
So that board member has to be a city council person on this board?
Yes.
Yes, it does?
Yes.
Is it actually two seats, the city manager and the board?
There's an alternate.
Or the board member?
However, we have two municipalities that don't have an alternate filled.
Can it, can it just be somebody that the board appoints? It don't have to be a member of the board?
Can we appoint our city manager?
I would have to read over the bylaws again, but I think it has to be an elected official.
It does say elected official board member.
Yeah, okay.
Local unit. What are some of your biggest challenges that you have running this building authority? What, is it staff? Are you too busy, not busy enough? What are some of your challenges?
We are extremely busy. The biggest challenge is staffing. We, we can, we could accept a little more expansion. accept a little more expansion. The city of Galesburg would not be an, an issue at all, but if we were to try and take on a Comstock or a Richland or a Kalamazoo Township, we would need more inspectors and we would need another building official. And I've been searching for inspectors since I've been here. We treat our inspectors very well because they're very hard to come by. They're loyal to Kaba, but they are difficult to find. They have to, ninety-eight percent of them, ninety-nine percent of them come out of the industry. And I have approached people that are in the industry, because there are specific qualifications that have to be met by the state in order to become a registered inspector. And they are too busy to even consider it. And quite frankly, they're making more money in the industry than what they would as an inspector, because there's such a demand. There's no one new coming into the industry. So that's our, that's our brick wall. However, my philosophy and this board shares it, and I say this board because this November, it could be a completely new board. This board has been with Kaba for four years. Prior to that, this was a completely new board. But we are prohibited by Act 230 to make a profit. So our revenue has to bear a reasonable resemblance of our operating, our annual operating expenses. It is acceptable to have up to twelve months of operating expenses in reserve. However, we're prohibited from making a profit. Part of the reason that PA, PA 230 states that is to regulate the permit fees. So that being said, my personal philosophy is this is a necessary service that local municipalities have to provide. And I don't see the benefit in growing for the sake of growing, just for the sake of growth. And I would prefer to fine tune a well-oiled machine and provide the level of service that we can for our existing members and, and maintain that. If the need came and if the opportunity arose to where we could get the additional staff and the, the proper qualified staff, we would do that. But that need had, you know, and we would seek that out, but that need hasn't, hasn't arisen yet.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I have for you is, when a municipality decides to join Kaba, what do you do to work with them to transition that municipality through full inspection through your board? Do you work with the, with the municipality to transition? Do you work with the citizens? I mean, what, what have you done actively to transition the community to Kaba in the past?
We, typically, the municipality will, will place an announcement in their newsletter, on their website, you know, that there is a, that there is a change. We provide, for the ones that have foot traffic, we provide copies of all of our applications and forms if you choose to have them here. So they're, they would be here available for pickup. Most of, most of our municipalities, they prefer to come to our office, and, and most of the foot traffic is through our office. And I think, I think a lot of that stemmed from their previous services were a half of, you know, a county away, where they had to travel further, and we're more centralized around all of the municipalities that we serve.
So a citizen could potentially get a, a permit here or at your office?
Correct. And they can also, they can submit, they can fill them out and submit them online.
Okay.
They can download plans. We're, we see an increasing number of online applications, particularly through and after the shutdown. A lot, a lot of people are starting to utilize that more and more.
Thank you.
One thing that I did want to touch on are, we use bsnabuilding.net as our database and our building permit software, and it covers all the permits and inspections. And most of our municipalities also have that database and that software. So by linking to our server, they can have real-time data and they can see all the, all permits that are issued. We, we generate monthly reports. Some of our assessors, we even provide weekly reports to them, so they can see how many permits were issued each week. But that information is available to them at their fingertips if they have that service. If you don't have building.net, there is a cost involved to acquire it, that the city would, would have to incur. But it's not necessary to have that software in order for us to become your building department. What we do, we hold on to the physical files while the permits are open and active. Once they're completed, the entire file goes to the municipality under the record retention requirements of the state of Michigan for archiving. So we bring them to the municipality and then they, they file them and they store them. We make daily rounds to pick up and drop off any applications or zoning approvals, plus all of the completed files. But if you don't have that, we would have a running database, and we would build that database. I'm assuming that your assessor probably uses bsnaassessing.net. So we would receive an import from them that would build our, our database of all of the city's property files. So from that point forward, we would then be able to start issuing permits, tracking history. Then this, at any time if the city wanted to access that, they would be able to have that electronically if they obtained the building.net program. However, you would still, in the lack of the program, you would still have the physical files that will be, that will be brought to, brought here once they're completed.
I've got a question here. It says here, under inspection fees and policies, it says additional re-inspections are fifty-five dollars each. Now, is, is that in case, say you go to do an inspection and they have an issue with it, and you, they choose to correct that issue, when you come back to re-inspect it, is that an additional fifty-five dollars?
There's one free re-inspection per every inspection type. So for example, for a typical, uh, single-family home that has a full basement, there's seven required inspections. So if, if, we have to fail an inspection, they get a free re-inspection once the corrections are made.
Okay.
The exception to that would be if one of our inspectors goes on the re-inspection and, or let's say we have a different inspector that goes and re-inspects it, and maybe he finds something that the previous inspector should have found, well, that's on us. So that, that would also be a, a free inspection. But yes, we offer a free, one free re-inspection for every inspection type.
That makes sense.
Gives the homeowner a little bit of leeway then to correct it.
Yep. And we also provide a written report citing the code section. And with homeowners, many times, you know, they're not very well-versed in the code, so they'll have quite, technical questions. And Steve is very good at, our, our, in-the-field building inspector, you know, walking them through, you know, what needs to be done.
That makes a lot of goodwill for the homeowners and for the citizens of the municipalities, because if they're getting failed and getting no guidance as to what they should do, they're like.
I agree.
Not everyone can afford a contractor to come in and do things.
Exactly.
Yeah, those, yeah, keeps, yeah.
Well, I can speak from personal experience of being on the other side of this fence, and I was subject to some inspectors that were like that, where the, the attitude was almost, it's up to you to figure out what's wrong. It was a...
There are inspection services in this county that do that today.
And really, yeah, that's, there seems to be a changing of the guard over the last several years. There are
That's good.
Several inspectors that are reaching retirement age, or they're getting out of it, and then there's a younger generation that's, that is starting to come up. But no, I don't, I don't believe in that philosophy. This is not a position of authority. Our, we don't make the rules. Our job is simply to administer them.
Your mission statement is very clear about that. Your mission statement is very clear about that. And I appreciate, and I'm just going to read a, a section of it, "Kaba ensures the necessary structural integrity, required means of egress facilities, sanitation, energy conservation, proper light, and the building environment, and provides safety to firefighters and emergency responders during emergency operations." And I think we lose sight of that. We have first responders that need to go into some of these dwellings, and if they're not to code, that puts them in more jeopardy. So I, I appreciate your mission statement very much.
Thank you, but I can't take credit for that, because that is literally in the, the state building code.
Okay.
But you adopted it. So it's a philosophy of working with the citizens.
Yes, you can't say it any better.
That's exactly right.
Absolutely. And, and that being said, too, we work very closely with all of the fire departments and municipalities that we serve. When it comes to, if there's, if there's structure fires, I will get a call. I'll get an email or a text from them, hey, we had a structure fire this weekend. When you come in, we need to go take a look. It's, the roof is collapsing. We need to condemn it, get the ball rolling to get it boarded up and secured from casual entry.
Amazing that that really happens.
Yes. I spend a lot of time in court. I usually, they have specific, it's either Mondays or Thursdays, and I typically will have three or four at a time when I go in. So yeah, we're, we take the enforcement part serious. Now, our enforcement is only effective as the ordinance officer that is taking it that next, because I have exhausted my authority once they've refused to follow that order, and I have to turn it over for an MCI. But they're, they're pretty diligent with that.
Anything else you'd like to share with us, Mike?
Um, I think that's probably it. Like I said, I'm sure there's some things I'm missing. And I gave, I did give Gabe my business cards. If any of you have any questions, you are more than welcome to contact me anytime. I'm available Monday through Friday, eight to five. I encourage you also to, if you know any elected officials in any of the municipalities that we serve, reach out to them. They would be more than happy to speak with you. The board members would be. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I have one more question for you. If, if we do choose to become a part of Kaba, what would the transition time look like?
Given the current environment, I would say, to be safe, two to three months, because the process would be in order, two to three months before we would legally be able to become your local enforcing agency. Because each municipality has to approve the application, and this is just a, a matter of course, under the Urban Cooperation Act. They would approve a new application. They have to vote on it. Then once they've approved it, we'll revise the inter-local agreement, which would...
The Kaba board has to approve the new municipality?
Each, each, yes, the Kaba board, which the Kaba board has already done so. And I guess I should speak of that with the condition that, because we understand that the state of Michigan is providing your electrical, mechanical, and plumbing inspection services now. The Kaba board approved the application with the condition that within a hundred and eighty days of becoming a member, that the city of Galesburg applies to the state of Michigan to locally enforce the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing codes. That being said, I will, I'll be doing ninety-five percent of the legwork for that. There will be some information that I'll need from Gabe, some financial information. But the, the primary information that the state needs to see on the application has to do with the financial stability of the building department, which I could never understand how, when it's, when a municipality was wanting to enforce their own codes and they don't have a building department, how you can provide the financial stability and history of a building department that doesn't exist. However, that's our state government. And there has been a mass exodus of municipalities getting away from the state over the last couple of years. So I would do all of that legwork. So if this...
You, you, we would do all of that legwork?
I would do the, all of the application legwork, because at that time, I'm your building department. I'm your enforcing agency. So I would submit that application. I would attend the commission, the construction code commission meeting where they review it and approve it. I would do all of that. There would be some financial information that I would need for the application for the city, but that, that would be where I would get it from, from Gabe. So.
So potentially two to three months, and then do you assist us in the meantime? Can, or what do we do? Are we just dead for that three months then?
Once, once the municipalities have all voted and approved the city to join, then you would have to adopt a resolution appointing Kaba as your local enforcing agency. Once that is done, then I can legally become the building official for your enforcing agency, and then we can immediately start representing the city. I say two to three months. It may not be, and I, I mean with the, the current environment, with the, the restrictions on the meetings and things are changing. Most of our municipalities have two meetings a month, so we should be able to get them all in. However, it doesn't always occur. Some of them only have one meeting a month, so I'm, I'm giving a little cushion there. It's, it could be done sooner if absolutely, I mean, it is possible.
So what do we do in the meantime? I guess that's more of a question for, for Gabe. Okay, thank you.
We can discuss that.
All right. Great, thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel?
And then, remember the council, but I'll say, I was a clerk to council on township when Kaba was formed.
Anna?
Yes.
How are you?
Good, nice to hear you.
Good. Long time no see. Nice to see you.
Been a while.
The mask fooled you.
Yeah.
And I served on the Kaba board for a short time, and I can't say enough good about what they did and the positive changes within the Comstock community when Kaba was up and running. It bumps along the road to get it going, because it was brand new.
Sure.
But, yeah, it was good.
Thank you.
Good. Good to know. Okay, thank you very much.
Well, again, I appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
Yes, thank you very much.
And like I said, my door's always open, and feel free to call me if you have any questions.
And your business card is in the beginning of the packets that we all have.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Soon as you might be safe.
I'll be in touch.
Okay, thanks, Gabe.
Further discussion, counsel, on Kaba?
Well, I just, I still don't understand what it's going to cost the city.
That's what we're going to have to talk, we're going to have to negotiate that, I guess.
No.
Well, yeah, it doesn't cost us anything, because where, where they get paid is by the fees. We get, we can, the fee schedule, we set with them. We negotiate that. And part of it will go to us and part of it will go to them. And that's where they make their money at.
I don't believe part of it goes to us.
No.
Well, that's what he was saying about the administration fee versus the...
I, I need to provide a little bit of clarification. Kaba doesn't cost the city of Galesburg anything.
Anything.
Period.
Well...
However.
If Kaba runs a budget deficit, which they have not since their inception, then we would pay for their business operations costs. However, they have a twelve-month reserve of funds. They have never once run a budget deficit. I chose Kaba to present to you guys as a solution to our building permit services and inspection needs, because I believe in intergovernmental agreements, because they provided the most comprehensive services, and they have a history of success, and a history of service to their, their constituent municipalities. Kaba doesn't cost anything.
No, Kaba doesn't cost anything, but we don't get the planning and fee, we don't get all the fees that we have in the past.
The city of Galesburg spent roughly two thousand dollars on their building permit, their building department, last year. I would offer that as, that, that's nothing. That, that is an insignificant portion of the city budget.
Is, is that what we brought in, in all our building fees?
Our building permit fees have not been market rate for over ten years. Our building permit fees, they cost the city money. Our building department cost the city money for the last ten years. It was inefficient. It was inappropriately run. I, I think Kaba's the best solution.
Now, from what I understood, the way he described it, basically, those fees that are going to be charged... Now, from what I understood, the way he described it, basically, those fees that are going to be charged to the public, we will pay those fees upfront. And then it's up to us to recoup those fees from-
No.
That's what he said.
Yeah, that's what he said.
That's what he said.
That was on the-
That's the ordinance issue, right? There's two separate-
That's an ordinance issue. Let's just talk about building permits for one moment. Building permits. John Doe, John Q. Public, who lives on Maple Street, goes to CABA, gets their building permit, pays CABA for their building permit. That's how CABA funds itself. The city doesn't fund them. However, if CABA did some zoning function for the city of Galesburg, if a new grocery store wanted to move in and we wanted CABA to provide a planning review to make sure that that is, the, the location was appropriately zoned, et cetera. I believe in that case, the city would pay for some portion of that, I don't know off the top of my head. Mike is far more an expert in this than I, but, um.
Isn't that the administrative fee that we would pay for the zoning?
I believe it's, we pay the administrative fee. The applicant bears, just like in the real world, the applicant bears the cost of applying for their permits.
If there are uncollected fees, what he is saying is, the city has to have an ordinance that allows us to assess those fees against their taxes. But that would only happen if they failed to pay them.
Yeah.
The, the permit holder.
I believe I, I'm not an expert in that, I, I don't know specifically.
Right, that's specific for uncollected because they are not a taxing entity, they cannot put a lien on the property, et cetera, like the city could. But. It is a little confusing, Rich, because there's the building inspection piece of it and then there's the opportunity for the zoning ordinance piece of it.
And that's addressed to us.
And that's where the fees may lie, not in the building inspection thing, uh, piece of it, which is what I think we were looking at.
Well, he kinda jumped around a little bit too there, so.
Yeah.
I was a little disappointed when I was reading here that they offer ordinance enforcement services and then he said they don't do that. Yeah. And it says right in here they do, so I was a little- Well, because it was- A little disappointed about that. I think in the application. For that too.
Because the information in the packet
Yeah.
Isn't as clear as it should be.
And all their inspection fees and everything's higher than what we charge, but we were gonna raise those anyway?
Right. We haven't raised them for, I was under the impression about fifteen years. And the nice thing about this is it is market rate to the surrounding communities, so it's all consistent in that, in that sense. So, you know, one side of McCullum is gonna pay a hundred dollars for a permit and the other side of McCullum is gonna pay a hundred dollars as opposed to fifty here and two hundred there or whatever. So it's market rate, they keep up on that, um, they price fairly against the market and it's consistent throughout the whole association. Is there anything else that you wanted to ask or share about this?
Uh, no.
So, my concern is, um, what do we do in the, in the meantime? If we do indeed choose to go to CABA, what do we do for the open building permits that are out there right now?
Or somebody wants to build something in three months and who's gonna write the permit?
Well, I think, he said two to three months. It, it looks like it's probably gonna be around six weeks, I mean, based on how we broke it down. But yes, I mean, that is something that we have to identify. What is this, this gap here and where would we go? Do you have an answer to that at this point?
I do, we can discuss it. It's not on the agenda, but-
Okay.
The building permit services that are currently available to the residents of Galesburg are pretty limited. We don't have a building department. We don't have a building inspector and I'm not a certified building anything, so.
The state permits could still be filled.
State permits are, can be filled, but that's not what the city of Galesburg, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. People go directly to the state for those. Building permit applications, I'm reviewing and I'm doing the best I can. I have issued, if I, if I remember correctly, I have issued two. That is only because the architect stakes their reputation when they stamp a set of plans. They're telling me that these plans are compliant with the Michigan Building Code and I can issue it. I have actually turned away Galesburg residents who can't come to me with plans stamped by an architect or an engineer because I can't in good conscience tell them that their project will ever be approved, will ever receive a final building inspection. I don't know if it meets the building code. I've had those discussions with Galesburg residents multiple times over the last month. We're in a tight spot. And we're doing the best we can.
What do we have to do as far as this? Do we need to do anything as far as a motion or anything to get this rolling if we want it to roll, if we're agreeing that?
After the member organizations of CABA approve Galesburg's membership. If, if they do, it would then fall on the city council to pass another resolution.
So it'll come back to us and the-
It'll come back to us.
Okay, gotcha.
So we don't need an action tonight and, uh?
Correct, this is just a discussion item. I wanted, uh, Mr. Alwin to be here to answer your questions. And hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have a decision.
So the application is to their board and it will go out to their municipalities?
I already filled out the application to the board. Uh, the board approved us. Now, the member, member municipalities, they all have to approve us. Once they do it, then it comes back to us.
Okay, so the ball is rolled.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Yes.
Thank you. That makes me feel a little bad.
Yes, yes.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the CABA agenda item?
Good.
I'll fill out the branch next week.
Okay, very good. We will move on to item number seven. Uh, open public hearing to consider the budget. We looked at the budget last month. Is there any further discussion? I don't have an updated copy, but my assumption is that the sixty-five hundred for code up went back in the budget.
It did. Uh, my apologies if I didn't include a resolution in your agenda packet, Mayor West. Do you have mine?
Oh, no, I haven't, thank you. I'm sorry. I'm between classes, so I'm like-
Um, yeah, the resolution in front of you does include sixty-eight hundred dollars added back to the zoning board budget for maintenance of the municipal code, um, online and otherwise. As, as you requested at the budget hearing on June seventeenth, I believe.
Do we need to formally open a public hearing before you do that, please?
Okay, very good, thank you. Open public hearing to consider budget, is that-
You need a motion to the-
Okay, very, thank you very much then, um, and in the future, I like those cheat notes on the agenda. Okay, so the floor would be open for motion to-
I'll make, I'll make the motion to go to Pope.
Thank you, trustee Smith.
I'll support it.
Could you roll call please, Anna?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We are now in open public hearing to consider the budget.
I do have one question. Under the general fund expenditures on the resolution, it's three hundred dollars more than on our budget. And I'm wondering where that, what that three hundred dollars is. If you add the six seventy-seven oh seventy-eight plus sixty-five hundred, it comes to sixty.
Oh, he put sixty-eight hundred back in.
Six eighty-three five seventy-eight. Oh, he put sixty-eight hundred?
Yep, that's what he said.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we had sixty-five hundred, didn't we?
I thought it was sixty-eight hundred.
All right, that makes, that's where the three hundred is, thank you.
So code up went to sixty-eight hundred.
Correct.
Well, that was an easy answer.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I told it was. Something that makes sense to me.
Sir, are there any questions or other discussion about the budget?
Yeah, the fire fund. The twenty-seven that is our, um, one mil for equipment for the fire department.
Fire fund revenues?
Yep. That's to be taken out of there.
Taken out of the budget?
Can't be used anything but for equipment.
It can only be used for equipment. We cannot have it in the budget for anything else. And only the fire board and the two municipalities vote on it. We're not-
No.
We're not just the only people that run the fire board or the fire department. It's Charleston too.
Right, we, we understand that.
Yeah, well, you can't put that in there.
Okay, but let's make sure we understand.
Okay.
This is the one mil. Wonderful. Um, any other discussion or questions? All right. Are, is there any public on our feed that would like to comment on the budget?
There's only, if it wasn't on that.
Okay, very good. We'll wait just another second for public comment. And council, any other questions or concerns with the budget? Okay, all right, we've been open for, uh, public comment as well. Floor would be open for a motion to accept the- Then vote, okay?
Then motion to-
Uh, motion to go out of public session. Uh, public hearing, rather.
I'll make a motion to go out of public hearing, back into normal.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, so we're back in normal session. And floor would be open, uh, for a motion to accept the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget in front of you.
I'll make a motion.
I will second.
Anna, would you roll call please?
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Marvel.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
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 Thank you, um, the city manager, Baron, for the work that you put in on this. I know that it was, uh, an exhaustive task. Um, I appreciate your dedication and attention to the detail. I also appreciate the very, um, easily understood format in which this budget was presented to us. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And you have a budget. Very good.
Uh, do we need to pass this resolution then?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we are looking at resolution two zero two zero zero seven zero six E, resolution to approve the budget. Floor would be open to a motion.
I'll make the motion.
And I will second.
All in favor? Do we have to roll call this if we've already approved the budget? All right.
It's a resolution, so yeah.
Oh, it's a resolution, roll. Just roll call everything.
Sure. We'll try that tonight.
Okay.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Wordinger.
Yes.
Marvel.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to number nine, resolution two zero two zero zero seven zero six B. Resolution to approve city manager, deputy mayor, city approved mayor, deputy mayor, city manager, and designated staff to be signers on all Citibank accounts. I will start with this discussion, uh, as you know, council, Vice Mayor Wordinger and myself were put on as signatories about nine or ten months into our terms only on the accounts payable account with PNC Bank.
Yeah.
We are not at, uh, on any other accounts.
No.
Nor do we have that information other than the information that council was given last year about all of the additional accounts for, uh, FDIC reasons. So, um, with that, history said that I'm gonna go ahead and, Gabe, let you tell us why you need this.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about this resolution. In my discussions with the, excuse me, uh, banks and credit unions that the city does business with, they have told me repeatedly that I need a resolution from the city council designating myself and those people designated to be signers and have access to the bank accounts.
We've got a lot of-
In your resolution, um, specifically, I wrote out mayor, deputy mayor, city manager, and specific staff persons handling accounts payable and accounts receivable duties. I did not name anyone specifically because people change positions. Councilors retire, new people get voted in, um, et cetera. So, this resolution should work for some time.
Okay.
Do you guys have any questions about why it was needed or?
Does this automatically, I'm sorry, um, does this automatically cancel out then the other names that are on the accounts? I mean, once this resolution, you go in there and it's just-
Yeah, then after I fill out the proper forms with PNC, Mercantile, everybody else.
Automatically, no, well, not automatically, they will have to be removed.
Yeah, they have to be removed, yes. I know, once he goes in there, but it doesn't take it off.
I'll provide this resolution to all the banking institutions, plus their paperwork.
And it is a bit, an area of concern because there are mayors of, and staff from fifteen years ago still on those accounts. Um, so to rectify that immediately is important.
I know, I've done resolutions like this, um, before for my job and we've had to be more specific, actually name the accounts. And I'm wondering if the banks will accept this general resolution like this.
They will, all the word I've gotten so far is that the resolution as written is appropriate.
I also, I also, well, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking this over, but, uh, I can understand the mayor, deputy mayor, and city manager having access to all accounts. But why do the, um, staff have to have access to anything except for the accounts payable that they just signed the checks for?
Any staff person who's working on accounts payable or accounts receivable, typically those are two separate duties
Right.
handled by separate people. I'm not clear as to your question.
Well, I know that there's CDs and other accounts and those aren't, those accounts aren't anything that, that a signature. You have to have a specific person to be able to go and cash out that account. It's not something that you hand somebody a check and write. That, that's what I call accounts payable when I'm talking about signing checks. But the CDs, I think, should be, there, I don't know if there should be so many people, um, having access to all these CDs except for mayor, deputy mayor, and city manager. That was my concern.
So, I think that part of, um, having office staff that receivable or payable, a person to do that is that when they go to transfer or draw from a CD and put it in a general fund, then that would be a staff person, giving the staff person the opportunity to draw that to a different fund for payables?
I typically would not assign anyone that duty, that would typically be a duty reserved only for the city manager.
That's what I-
So why do we need a staff person?
Does it give you a leeway?
I, it gives me some flexibility with duty assignments, um.
Just because we signed this resolution doesn't mean you have to do it though.
Yeah, it doesn't mean you-
Well, that's true.
Yeah, it doesn't mean you have to do it, quite frankly, sometimes- Yeah, it doesn't mean I have to do it. Quite frankly, sometimes mayor West is in Kalamazoo and deputy mayor Wordinger is in Lansing and
Ooh.
If I'm not in the office.
Right. See, the three of us went together some way, we all died.
We went for an outing.
Yeah, and we all died. Then you're gonna have to...
On our way back to City Hall.
All right.
Um, I want somebody to be able to sign the paychecks.
Okay, and, and the staff are all bonded enough to be responsible for, to handle the money?
I don't want to get into this bonding.
Well, I guess before I would want to give them permission. I guess I wanna make sure they're bonded.
I, let, let's not go there. It's, the city covers every single staff member with the appropriate amount of liability insurance and anything else.
Okay.
I don't wanna muddy the waters.
Who has the authority to give these other staff members authority? Just you, the other named personnel? All three or just you or just Lori or what?
The, the person, you mean the people handling accounts payable or...
Yeah, whoever say you designate Benita or somebody else in the office to sign for something that day or whatever the case may be, who has the authority to do that?
Right now?
Right now?
No, with this resolution. Who are you giving authority to?
Right now, it would be Benita Hayward is accounts receivable and Susan Weston is accounts payable.
And, right, but what I'm saying, you're saying other city staff as seem fit, you know, or however you wanna word it. Who has the authority to name other personnel as signatories is what I'm asking.
Only the city council.
Okay.
So you, we would need then a resolution to approve those people that you sent with this resolution to the financial institutions.
No, 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 no.
So they know who they are?
No.
That was a question.
No, that, I apologize, I misunderstood, um...
You still not cleared?
I'm still not cleared.
Okay, you, you're saying yourself, the deputy mayor, and the mayor with this resolution are going to have the ability to sign. Unless, and somebody else, as you designate, or, that's what I'm asking, who is designating, who has the authority to allow somebody else to sign? The three names here? Just yourself, mayor West?
Many, if, if I refer specifically to the resolution that I've asked you guys to pass, and I titled it ambiguously incorrectly on the agenda, but the resolution reads only mayor, deputy mayor, city manager, and staff persons handling accounts payable and accounts receivable.
All right, so those two people, those two other people will always be the clerk and, and the, or not the clerk, but the, Benita's job and the treasurer's job.
It will always be...
Will always be those two positions rather than the name...
It will all be those two positions.
Rather than the named personnel, it'll be those two positions.
Correct.
So it can't be anybody else that say you, somebody else that works, say Josh, you, you're gonna sign today.
Yeah.
Or this month or this year or whatever. It's not gonna be like that. It's gonna be those two positions, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Only the people with responsibility.
Gotcha. Okay, that's why we were, we weren't communicating correctly.
It's not trash.
Sorry about that.
No, my fault too, my fault too.
And this resolution to the financial institutions removes all those old names?
Well, it will once I complete paperwork.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yes.
But you have to have this to do that.
Correct.
All right.
Kedok.
I'm clear. Anybody else not clear?
Where is Mudridge?
I think he covered everything.
Yeah, otherwise, it's gonna have to be, you know, Carol and I will go to the bank and bank and the bank and the bank, so. This is good.
Yeah.
So it's the emotion?
I understood him.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution two zero two zero zero seven zero six B.
Good. You have a motion and support?
I'll support.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll set, yep, sorry, go ahead, Anna.
Coleman?
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Wordinger.
Yes.
Marble.
Yes.
Kloski.
Yes.
Yes.
Which carries?
It's revolution day.
It is resolution day. Okay, guys, we're looking at number ten, resolution two zero two zero zero seven zero six A, approve city council meeting dates for July through December twenty twenty. We have, uh, a resolution in front of us that gives us the dates of July sixth, August third, September fourteenth, August fifth, November ninth, and December second. These meetings will start promptly at six PM.
December seventh.
Okay.
I'm sorry, seven, correct.
Where was my head?
Uh, so, is there a discussion? Or would be open to a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two zero two zero zero seven zero six A to adopt the city of Galesburg city council meeting dates from July to December of two thousand twenty. I'll support.
That is for six PM, right?
That is.
Okay, I just, well, I heard seven mentioned in there.
Unless there's, unless there is...
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I heard seven mentioned it and she said yes.
I know, we've talked about it for six months, but...
December seventh, not second.
I just wanted to clarify.
Very good, okay, uh, any other discussion? Okay, Anna, thank you.
West.
Yes.
Marble.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Kloski.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Wordinger.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Moving on to number eleven, resolution two zero two zero zero seven zero six C to set an alternate date for the December Board of Review.
This resolution, um, was, uh, requested by our assessor so that he could set, um, the December Board of Review meeting date, um, or for, allow for an alternate Board of Review date, um, the third Monday in July, July twentieth. We've already noticed for it, so we're hoping that this is simply a check and approval.
So floor would be open for a, uh, motion to approve the alternate Board of Date, the Board of Review Date Resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hold on, what, the alternate date is when? July twentieth?
July twentieth, um, this resolution was requested by our assessor.
But why is it the December Board of Review?
Um, the wording is confusing, however, the resolution does read that the alternate date will be July twentieth. That was the alternate date proposed.
And it's normally in December?
I don't know what it normally is.
Here is a December Board of Review and a July Board of Review?
Yeah, there are, correct, there are both.
That is confusing to me.
Well, it was the Public Act one twenty-two, uh, allows an alternate July Board of Review meeting date, um, and an alternate December Board of Review meeting date, uh, during the second week of December. So there is one happening in December, but this resolution is to specify.
Why would you make it the alternate for December in July when there's already one in July?
It's...
It's, it, just to, for that December, it has to be for that December.
It's actually, he's wanting it to be the Monday, uh, the second Monday in December instead of, um, Tuesday follow, isn't that what he's asking here?
I believe that is correct. He wants it to be the third Monday in July rather than, I don't know what the wording is, it said something to the effect of a...
Tuesday following the second Monday.
Yes.
So Patrick is basically asking to change both dates.
Yeah.
To alternate July and December, to alternate dates. And I know that, given that he is assessor for other municipalities, sometimes he has conflicts with those Board of Review.
Long as he's covered, I'm just looking out, you know, I'm just trying to clarify this so that there, we don't have to come back and do it again.
It is a bit confusing.
I'm not trying to...
It is very confusing, this language is... No, this is confusing because under the actual resol, resolve, I don't see where we're resolving to change, to set the December date. Monday through July.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Monday of the week of the third Monday of July being July twentieth has been selected as the meeting day for the July twenty twenty Board of Review. That, that is what you're, you're being asked to set July twentieth is, as the alternate Board of Review date so that Patrick can attend, uh, his Board of Review meeting here in Galesburg and attend to his duties in a different municipality.
So in other words, December's date was not changed?
I don't believe so.
I was just gonna say, so December isn't being changed.
During the week of the second Monday of December.
Even though we have it in the resolution, that's okay, okay, as long as we know, so...
Sorry to confuse you guys.
No, I'm glad you caught it because I just...
It makes sense to me.
It is awkwardly worded.
Yes, it is.
I just wanna make sure we're covered, that's all.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm not trying to...
December Board of Review, but we're setting the July Board of Review in the document.
And the reason we need this resolution is because we've already set that July review date, so we need to change that.
Okay.
Apparently we're not messing with December, we're asking to mess with July.
Okay, and I can't read.
The title.
I know, it's titled, it's date for December Board of Review, so...
That was my confusion.
It's, it's asking to change it to July date and it's titled December. It's conflicting.
I apologize on behalf of Patrick.
So, uh...
As long as Patrick knows.
Can I, can we motion to correct this resolution?
Sure.
Okay, then floor would be open for a motion to correct the title of resolution zero, or two zero two zero zero seven zero six C to set an alternative date for and redact December and put July Board of Review.
For the July Board of Review.
Floor, floor would be open to a motion to change this resolution?
I make a motion to change resolution two zero two zero zero seven zero six C as stated now to change the date for the December Board of Review, change it to the date for the July Board of Review.
I second.
Okay, we have...
I seconded.
Justice Harmon. So we'll, we'll call this and then we'll vote on the resolution.
Yes.
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 Now floor would be open to a motion, uh, to adopt the resolution two zero two zero zero seven zero six C as amended to reach July Board of Review.
I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
Any further discussion?
No, I'm confused.
Okay, yes, Anna, please? Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Moving to twelve, resolutions two zero two zero zero seven zero six D. Resolution to approve the appointment of election workers for the August fourth, two thousand twenty election. Floor would be open to a motion to approve this resolution?
I make a motion to approve resolution two zero two zero zero seven zero six D to approve the appointment of election workers.
I'll support.
I just have one question, um, Anna, I'm gonna shoot this to you. Because this is a primary, we need more people than we did in the March election. We only had three, we had...
Right, that was all done by absentee county board and as it stands right now, we'll, we'll be open, people will be coming up.
Um, the, for the August fourth election, okay, all right, so we need to staff that at a higher rate then?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have, um, a motion and support to improve the resolution, Anna?
Yes.
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 Alrighty.
We have a resolution.
Wow.
Um, that brings us to our update from our DPW supervisor. Hi, Josh.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Good, welcome, thank you.
Must be all that sun.
Yeah.
Said you look tanned, must be all that sun you're getting.
Works in the tanning room.
Everything except his legs, he has to keep covered up anyway.
Yeah, I, I feel for him. I'm right there.
Farmer tan.
Yeah. Hi, guys, so, um, pretty normal month minus the, um, Brian's accident early in the month with the mower. Um, couple of the highlights, uh, our generator for our drinking water wells. Um, the radiator failed in it. The repair on it is in process, so that's, that'll be fixed next week on Wednesday. Um, an update from Gal Lake, they are having issues with wellhouse number one. They, overheating issue. Um, one of the, um, computer DFDs in there. We, uh, opened up all of, all of the panels and boxes and we put in a fan. And, uh, so far, it doesn't helping out, so hopefully it's just the heat and we'll kinda get through it here after this week. So you think that's a temporary situation? Yeah. Um, the fix is temporary if the problem Is temporary. Isn't temporary, you know, if the problem just solves itself, you know, after the heat kinda goes away, then we'll be fine, but... But this is, obviously this hasn't happened before. Nope. So this probably isn't a temporary problem, it's probably a... We're in the process of, uh, figuring out the issues and seeing if it's just a temporary problem or if it's a, a more permanent issue for us. Yep, gotcha. Um, the trail, uh, they are having issues with getting things moved, taken care of. I've taken a lot of phone calls from them about things that we don't have anything to do with. Um, there is some power poles in the middle of town with power outlets on them that, that they want us to take down and that isn't us and, and issues with the hydrants and just, there's just a lot of issues on the trail that, that I've been dealing with in the last probably two weeks or so, so. Um, other than that, the mystics have kind of calmed out a little bit. There was twenty-two this month compared to eighty last month.
Was it largely due to the trailhead?
Yeah. Other than that, pretty normal, um, normal month, um, I do have to bring up, so the patch in the middle of town from the water main break, we have to pave that at some point here, so that's on the docket for coming soon in the future. So the patch you put in was just temporary? Yeah. Because in the wintertime... Really thin asphalt or something, is that what? Well, it's, it's concrete and then it's plastic and then it's concrete again. Cause it was wintertime? Yep. Cold, so...
So do we have to remove part of the concrete?
The top, I can't, I think it was like eight inches of concrete. Plugged that out of there, pulled the plastic, and then we can just asphalt.
And replace it with eight inches, eight hundred pounds to the square foot.
It's a good stuff.
Is what it is.
So...
So Josh, is that our responsibility or, and we have to have, uh... So Josh, is that our responsibility or, and we have to have uh M dot along our side doing that?
They are probably going to.
Because of the intersection?
Require the, and inspect the quality of the asphalt and the patch, so, but I mean, other than that, that's all on us.
I just want you to know that everything you say is mic'd, okay, so everything you say, we hear. Okay, I'm sorry, Josh.
Um M dot will probably have to be here to inspect the quality of the asphalt as well as, as the patch itself, so they won't be doing anything for us, but it'll be, they will be eyes on with it.
We'll have to pull their permits for lane closures.
It is a one day job, as far as I'm reviewed, it's a one day job.
If the concrete comes out right.
It's, it, it should.
We, we did a patch over by the lumberyard here two years ago.
Yes.
Same thing.
Yep, identical.
And Josh, I just, that's what I was, um you said that there was plug-ins in the poles so people could lit, outlets?
No, so they, this was back twenty years ago, thirty years ago.
Yes. Okay.
Somebody from Consumers, uh I'm not sure of the name, but they put them in way up on the poles so we can plug in our uh.
Christmas light decorations?
Yeah, they're, they're at the top of the, and the same thing when we had the farmer's market, we drew for the food trucks on the top of that pole plant there.
Okay, alright.
And I think that was Lawrence Bailey and someone else who worked with Consumers at the time.
Yes.
So.
They have been cut on for a large amount of time, they aren't active, they're not live, but there is a line that goes from pole to pole over to pole.
Okay.
And they want them removed before we take the pole out. Um and I don't have any way of doing that, so.
They want the lines that connect the poles removed?
Are po, so the, the lines that that run from outlet to outlet to outlet, they want them removed.
Mm-hmm. And that's what we have going on in that city lot back there too, where I wanted to put the lead too, is that the same situation that was jumped out there?
No.
Okay, sorry.
So is it Consumers that wants it re, removed or?
AR engineering.
AR engineering wants that line removed from the power poles. They believe it's a safety issue, it's a deadline, it will be discussed at the meeting tomorrow morning at ten o'clock.
Okay.
A consumer installed on there, consumers should take them down.
Consumer installed, consumer can take them out.
Exactly.
Uh this is not something that will be the responsibility of the city.
I don't want my.
They, they are deadlines.
Yeah, but we don't want our DPW up on the power poles, it's not where they belong.
No, Josh won't do it, DPW won't do it. It, it, it'll be resolved tomorrow morning, but it has become an issue.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay.
We're, we're fortunate, we have a meeting tomorrow morning.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I'm going.
Okay.
Jason, Raleigh and the rest of them.
And um I will just reinforce with both of you that uh the agreement was that the city would absorb no cost and they would leave it better than they found it. So um that would be the way that I would roll with that.
This is the argument that we have been having with these, with the trail people and it's
Yep.
That's why it's a highlight here.
Good job. And I assume the other, the other minor expenditure we were asked to make was shut down, just, we're good with that, alright, good go.
Yeah.
Thank you, Josh.
How is Brian doing?
Good, he's uh back to normal, he's good to go.
Good, good to hear.
So our box is coming in for our plow truck again, on schedule.
I called them, I spoke with him late last week and it was on the same schedule as before, so.
I'm just, I'm just uh can't believe the last line here. Our good old diesel tank.
Oh yeah, okay, so this is another highlight, um I called to get fuel roughly three weeks ago and they refused to fill it.
Inside the barn.
Good for them.
Because it.
Really.
Bless their hearts.
The issue?
Yeah.
It is a safety issue, it's been a safety issue for a long time.
So are we drained or nearly drained or?
No, we're, that one is at about half, so I'm good.
Alright, so we need to get a new tank set and have that one filled?
We, I actually spoke with the fencing place this morning and they are sending over that quote, they were supposed to send it tonight, so.
My goodness, this is taking quite a long time for a fence.
We have the original quote at that, I presented, but everybody asked for the other quote, so I'm still working on that quote from that original fence.
Thank you, Josh.
Came and, they looked at it and the next day was when the state got closed. So they were closed all the way through Tallahassee, I think a month ago.
So we can get that expedited, we hope?
Ja, Josh and I have.
They're gonna have.
About that very.
We're just not gonna go with them.
Yeah, Josh and I talked about this uh this morning, um in preparation for the meeting and we hope to get this done within the next thirty days, it'll depend, of course, a lot on.
Does Crystal Flash get the tank out here whenever we're ready and soon?
Yeah, they're pretty good about that, fire wise.
If you don't, I know another salesman.
And, and it's not like we're, if we drain that tank, I have other options, I have a fuel car for the shell that we use on the plow truck, I can just drive the back hole up there, I mean, it's kind of a pain to drive the back, the back hole up there, but.
That forty gallons ain't no big deal.
It's doable, you know, so it's not like we're dead in the water if we don't get it done tomorrow.
Um is the compost pile being utilized much?
Yes.
Good.
Much, much, and we have not had any issues with any trash or junk problems.
Good.
So.
Excellent.
We have, I, I normally have about anywhere from three to ten people dump every day.
Wow.
And all of them, I would say ninety percent of them, I know personally. The other ten percent, I, I don't know personally, but they are, you know, from town, so it's not like everybody's coming from everywhere else and dumping either, so.
Well, it becomes an issue, then we'll deal with it, but for now, let's say good to go.
We are waiting on um burning the pile down there with the fire department, cause it is pretty hot and dry, so it's kind of a stand by.
How big is it?
It's pretty big.
Pretty big. It's time.
It's time to burn.
It's after you beat it down with the back hole.
Yeah, it's time, but.
High as this building.
It'll wait.
There's room, as long as there's still room around, you know, to get around, it's.
There's plenty of room in there.
It's a big area.
Um I don't know if this is the right place or not, but I'm just gonna drop it with you for a minute, uh I think that we missed our big trash day for spring. Um I'd like to see us do something like that in the fall where we have the dumpsters at the compost center again. And have plenty of time for the community to know that day and, and when that's gonna happen.
Is that metal still out there or is that gone?
It's taken back.
Good.
So I'm just gonna plant that seed with you, maybe we can talk about that um in August.
Definitely, I was gonna ask the same thing.
I know I have a couple of truck, truckloads I need to bury.
Yeah.
I was called about it today.
Okay, perfect, so.
That's good.
I'm just gonna carry that over then, maybe put, put that on August and we can set that date, thank you. Sorry, Josh, that means you'll be working a Saturday with me.
Oh, darn.
Okay. Anything else, Josh?
Nope, I do not believe so, um
Is the park equipment still shut down?
No.
No, okay, that and the, and the gazebo um pavilion, they're all straight up open, right?
They're all opened up and everything's good now.
And who empties the trash in the park?
Uh typically that was Brad, that was one of Brad's duties and Brad, as you can see on the update, has been gone. Brian and I have been dumping it in the last couple of weeks and it's been getting.
Yeah, just walking out there and I see it, all the way back at the river one and this time of year it gets a little bit ripe, so, okay, thank you.
When you said Brad is gone, is that?
Brad?
Vacation bereavement.
Bereavement.
Death in the family.
Death in the family, so.
Oh, no, okay.
He was on vacation for a week and then he had his death and then after he comes back from that, then he's on vacation again, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. Well, I need that kind of job.
Anything else? Okay, um I guess because we historically do, we'll ask for a motion to accept this report.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Which area?
Don't matter.
Um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, we appreciate your service, I still hear wonderful things all around town about that.
You have to do it, Josh.
You did good work, glad you brought it up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um let's uh take a peek at the point number fourteen, I'm actually looking at the sheriff's report, let's take a peek at that, any questions?
I did wanna provide a little bit of elaboration, um on sheriff's report, um I've had ongoing discussions with Deputy Jeff Miller, who is our deputy, um he wanted me to convey his, well, these are my words, not his, but um he's happy patrolling Galesburg every day. He likes the people and he likes what he does here. Um I also wanted to follow up on the council's request, um in our, and I honestly, I don't recall if it was our May uh sheriff's report or the June sheriff's report, there was uh one call for ordinance enforcement. I talked with Captain Christensen and with Jeff, I think it was a coding error because uh they obviously don't enforce ordinances for the city, so that was probably uh just a call that was not coded correctly in the report. Um but he hasn't encountered anything terribly unusual and the dispatch report should reflect that.
I just wanna say we enjoyed Jeff and is this, is the six month bid coming up soon because I hope he gets another bid.
Uh it was a couple of months ago and he did bid.
Oh, he did get it?
He just, he just got it.
Oh, that's good news, good news, I'm glad.
Um I did get a call from a local business this weekend about um one of our local transients shooting fireworks into their outdoor seating area multiple times, um even shooting them at children. Um I will be uh getting ahold of Captain Christensen personally and following up on that. You're shaking your head, you know what's, you've heard this.
I can elaborate that he, he spent all day on that and he did.
Jeff did?
Find him.
Good, okay, okay, cause I, I was out of it, I was out today, good.
I also um had a, a call today from a business residence that young boys were climbing up Midway Cafe and they thought, and it was taken care of and, and they said they wouldn't do it again, but they said they thought it was just an abandoned building that they wanted to play on. And they were told that it was dangerous.
Captain Miller talked to the kids, he got them down off the roof and uh resolved.
This was this afternoon, I don't know if that was a different day or not, cause I think they've been doing, I understand they've been doing it more than once.
I thought it was today, Deputy Miller talked to those kids.
Yeah, okay.
The fire chief actually called me and then I was able to get ahold of Jeff to.
Okay, good. I just don't want to see these kids hurt.
Yeah, roof could collapse.
Right, oh god, yeah, just anything.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on the police report? Um then.
Weapons?
As we have historically, floor will ask for a motion to accept the uh Kemble Sioux County Sheriff's Department rec, uh report for May twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion to accept uh Kemble Sioux County Sheriff's Department's May twenty twenty report.
It's the May and June?
Oh, I'm sorry, May and June.
And June, May and June, twenty twenty.
Oh yeah.
All support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, thanks for that uh clarification too, Josh. Okay, uh that is that portion of number fourteen.
Um before the council gets to make their motion to go to closed session, I wanted to point out um that I included in your agenda packets, um notice that the state of Michigan has extended the order allowing public bodies such as the city council to um continue meeting remotely, that is via online or conference call. The COVID nineteen pandemic is still raging and unfortunately it is spiking in western Michigan. We will have our city council finding and zoning, um any other public meetings will continue to be closed to the public physical site or until further notice. We just wanna be safe and comply with the state of Michigan's orders, um but I did include um that notice in your agenda packets as well.
Thank you. Okay, uh city manager Barrick, I'm gonna need your assistance to phrase the motion to move into closed session to discuss specifically. Um that has to be part of the motion.
Do you have to name it?
I have to name the subject we will be discussing in closed session.
Um then I guess it would in, if it, me, um.
A personnel?
Personnel, uh moving into closed session to discuss city managers' employment.
Issue.
Period.
City manager's position, employment?
Yeah.
Anna, do you have a motion contrived over there, motion to move to closed session to discuss city managers' employment? Right? Floor would be open for a motion to move into closed session to discuss city managers' employment.
I will make that motion.
Do we have support?
All support.
When are you gonna come?
Who can draw?
Roll call please, Anna.
Marvel?
Yes.
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 Harmon?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Um so the council will move then into closed session, um I guess we're all set?
Did we actually enter on, or everybody?
No, we need to X it out, we need to do it, yeah.
No, no, do they, they can't, don't record this, do they?
You're gonna stay around, right?
He, he is in closed, do you want him in closed session?
I do.
Okay, that's fine, you may stay. Um and then, to help me understand how that works with our streaming, you'll shut it down, you shut down when we run in, thank you. And then you're gonna have to wait, cause when we come back up, we gotta get, once we move out of closed session, then we have to motion to adjourn the formal council meeting. So no, you're gonna wait, you're gonna have to wait for us to go through our closed session and then we'll move to come out of closed session and then I need a public uh motion to close the council session for the night and that has to be public.
I don't, my first city council closed session, do they stay in?
Don't they stay in?
Oh, they can stay, I don't care if they stay, that's up to you.
That's up, that's your decision.
It's all up to you. Or you can go, yep, give them a place to go. Thank you, council, um, we will, uh, move now to council comment, um, Dennis.
I think we discussed everything I've got.
Doug?
I just wanna say, uh, I was at a museum board meeting, the museum board approved the money to go ahead and build the addition to the museum, they have all, they have the money to do it now, they had a big donation, another big donation, so they're going forward in that process.
So, is it an addition, or is it a separate building?
It's an addition.
So, it's a-
Well, it's a, I've got a, I got a plan.
Okay, I, I just wondered, so is it-
It's, it's connected.
They're connecting with the walkway, okay.
Yeah.
Interesting, good, thank you, Doug, anything else?
No.
Okay, Rich?
No.
Becky?
No.
Linda?
Uh, two things, first of all, were we going to, uh, set another date in July for our, a special meeting?
Uh, oh, yeah. Gabe, did you want us to have a special July meeting?
Yeah. Well, I'd like to put on a record that we haven't been paying for our last two special meetings.
I think if you look at your check-
Council gets ten dollars if a special meeting.
Because my normal meeting, I get forty-two dollars.
Yeah, mine's alright.
And my last two checks have been fifty-two dollars.
Yeah.
It, it's not stated on there, but it's-
Forty-two dollars.
Mine, mine have only been sixty-two dollars, so I have not, but that's okay.
They're all different prices.
Thank you, they're all over the place.
Becky, I look to, yours is the same as mine?
Yeah.
On the last thing?
Okay.
Mine's always been the same.
Alright, so noted, thank you.
Take that out?
Okay.
Well, I know it's not the same as what it was when we did special meetings, and something changed, I don't know what changed, but something changed.
It's because, uh-
My checks are four dollars more than what they normally were.
Mine are ten, for, for just one meeting.
Whatever, I mean, it's not that much to, to get excited over, but-
Four dollars?
Well, that's, that was what I was getting at.
Okay, and then, uh-
Oh, no, I'm wrong, it's nine dollars, or, yeah, sorry, I was wrong about that.
Trusty Marley, you have something else?
Yes, I know that I have brought this up individually to different people, but I'm very, very concerned, um, regarding our Open Meetings Act. I have Attorney General Dana Nessel's Open Meetings Act handbook regarding both notice requirements, um, first of all, under minutes, that are minutes, proposed minutes must be made available for public inspection within eight days after the applicable meeting, and approved minutes must be available for public inspection within five days after public body's approval. We, we don't-
But they're not on the website?
On the website, our minutes are not on the website since January of twenty twenty.
I was not aware that they weren't posted. Yeah, I will take responsibility for that, that's my inexperience, uh, as the acting clerk. I apologize, and I endeavor to do better, I know, uh, frankly, having Anna come on has helped me quite a bit. Um, we do have minutes, we can post them, and I will get that done this week.
And also, there's a minimum of eighteen-hour notice requirements for, for instance, um, notice, um, our notice of our public meetings, and as I told, um, Gabe today, only the, only the budget hearing was on our website, not the actual meeting.
I thought I saw the actual rooms.
And, um, no, I looked it up, because I had people calling me and saying, is this just a special budget hearing meeting?
Yeah, somebody asked me to.
And I said, no, I think it's, that's why I went and asked Gabe, 'cause I said, no, I think it's the actual monthly meeting.
Yeah.
But that's published once, that's published and posted.
This, on the city's website?
The city's website posted, uh, on the city's front page, that we would be, uh, that something to the effect of, and I apologize, we just don't have it in front of me.
It was a-
It was something to the effect of, we were having a hearing about the budget, but it was dated today.
It just said special budget hearing, it didn't say anything about, um, our-
We had the same, um, concerns, I appreciate you raising those, um, and we know you're learning, so, we'll correct it and move forward, anything else?
No, except for, uh, if we're going to make to a special meeting and-
Okay, yeah, um, we'll do that, Trustee Werniger, do you have any comments? Okay, special meeting, uh, July, we are on the sixth. Any conflicting dates, any suggested dates, we're looking at the week of the twentieth?
I am going to be gone the twenty-first through the twenty-fourth.
Can we do the twentieth, which is again in Monday?
Is the planning and zoning.
Yep, planning and zoning.
Can't do that, okay.
And you talked to me, Gabe, about having a planning and zoning, or a work session, or?
We can, yes, I-
Are those meetings at seven now too, or are those at seven still?
I don't know, off the top of my head.
I'm assuming seven then, since someone's changed it.
Yeah, planning and zoning, would you guys would do your own schedule changing? Um, alright, so...
Do like week before.
But that's next week.
Oh. Oh, I can't, well, what day? I can't Monday, I can't Wednesday. Yeah, that one week I'm gonna be gone looks like probably the only week that they have it.
Is there enough for planning and zoning to have a meeting? Do you know?
What do you mean, enough, enough on the agenda?
Yeah, do you have enough agenda item to have a meeting?
We did receive today, um, the museum's application for site plan review.
And we haven't touched our code book in three months.
Okay.
And I did the minute, I did those minutes way back, from February, whenever.
Gabe, was there enough time to notice everybody that needs to be noticed for the museum?
Can't we do it on Tuesday?
Um-
Yeah, Linda's gone though.
But, you know, I'm gone and gone.
I believe so, it's a time to notice.
Well, even if any notice is required, I mean-
And we can certainly, this is a-
There's a couple of neighbors, um, yes, there is definitely time.
That's only fourteen, it's fourteen days away.
If there, if this is a special meeting, we don't have to do six o'clock, we can do any time during the day as well, if council is amenable to that. So, we could do the twentieth, um, before planning and zoning, or?
Patrick Couch's meeting is, I believe, twelve-thirty to three-thirty?
Here?
Here.
In the Guthrie, his board of review, yeah, okay.
In the afternoon, later that evening.
I could do the twenty-first in the morning.
Okay, what time would that be?
Anytime in the morning.
What times, what time is a good time in the morning on a Tues- does Tuesday work for everybody, Tuesday, the twenty-first?
It should work for me.
After coffee.
Make it work.
Not early.
Not early.
Earlier, the better, not early.
I'm not a morning person.
Um-
Can we do ten or ten-thirty or something?
Can we do ten or ten-thirty?
Ten'd be fine, yeah.
Ten o'clock, okay, uh, Flor would be open for a motion to call a special meeting, July twenty-first, two thousand twenty, at ten AM, in the Guthrie Room, here at City Hall.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
You said ten AM?
I'll second.
I made the motion.
She, he made the motion, Rich.
You said ten AM, Lori?
Yes, ten AM. Um, okay, we can just, uh, yea or nay on this, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, uh, motion passes, there will be a special meeting of the city council, July twenty-first, two thousand twenty, ten AM, at the Guthrie Room. Um, please make sure that that gets posted tomorrow as well, thank you. Um, and, um, I have no comments other than thank you all so much for your dedication, and as I look around the city, and I look around at the last year and a half of our time together, I think we've built a really cohesive council, I think we're well-balanced, um, and we're all really dedicated, and I appreciate that, so... With that, uh, Flor would be open for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
The motion and support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.